I didn't.
I did not.
She went at the last meeting, so we've sold out to some tour.
She was too.
But the last one we had.
That's right, that's mine, that's you.
No, my water, my hot water heater busted.
It was. I really don't have it, well, I was just being mean.
No, a two, two something, my hot water heater decided to.
You don't have a hot water heater.
We don't have a water heater. I say that all the time.
You have a water heater.
Water heater.
I'll have one of those, I'll have a new one.
I always say that to my hot water heater.
All right, six o'clock, and we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council in order, we do have a forum, appreciate everybody being here tonight. Kathy's kind of leaving her implications. Please.
Doopity.
Hey guys.
Okay, whatever right now. Or we thank you for this day, we thank you for everyone who took time to be here. We thank you for all that you do to help us. We pray to work that you would lead God to write this as we make these decisions, we pray for today. Just leave the way, we thank you for everything you do as many.
Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There you go. All right, we don't have anybody signed up for citizen participation in that, so we can jump right into budget discussion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, council, you have before you, um, two, uh, copies of the, uh, budget. One is, um, without adjustment, the other one comes with a, a water rate adjustment. I'd direct you to the one without adjustment first, and I'd like you to look at the general fund. We were able through, um, uh, significant cuts and, uh, some revenue, touching up some revenue slightly, uh, to end up with a balance surplus of one hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred dollars in the general fund. Um, and that, that, uh, particular amount there does not include any cost of living allowances, but it would give us room, uh, in, over the next few months to look at some possible merit raises. There are a few salary adjustments that are included in that, but no overall salary adjustments. It also includes a, um, seven hundred dollar reduction in the city's contribution on the, uh, health savings account. Um, if you look at O two, the utility under that one, before any rate adjustments, uh, we are currently sitting at, uh, let me preface this. The water, uh, collections, if you look at the water revenue and the sewer revenue on that, that has been adjusted based on a, uh, proration of the July collection. It's a total, combined total of about ninety-four thousand dollars, and I, uh, since July is a high usage month, I, uh, broke that down and only took eighty percent of that and added that into the water and the sewer accordingly. Um, with that, still, we are at, uh, four forty-three, seven sixty-eight, below, um, a deficit on the utility without, without an, a rate adjustment on that. If you look at your next one, which does have the rate adjustment, the rate adjustment is, as we've discussed in the past, and I think I've written to you about, includes a five dollar sewer, five dollar, uh, water, uh, base rate adjustment for residential and small commercial customers, and then larger meter sizes are, uh, increased accordingly. Um, with that, and then with a very small incremental, uh, water, uh, volumetric charge of twenty-five cents for residential customers per one thousand gallons, and, um, and it goes up from there, but it doesn't go over like a buck and a half for the very largest customers. Uh, we've reached, um, a positive balance of almost seventeen thousand dollars in the utility. Uh, it, we're, it pays, it, we're, we're balanced. Uh, we're at seventeen, sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-six if we do the rate adjustment. That's where we are, guys. And I can go through the volumetric increases if you'd like, or that are proposed. It's twenty-five cents for zero to a thousand gallons. Uh, it'd be four and a quarter. Um, it'd be, uh, four seventy-five, or, or four and a quarter for the, um, uh, one through nine thousand gallons, five dollars for the nine through twenty thousand gallons, and this is per one thousand gallons. Um, five and a quarter for, uh, twenty-one through forty, and then forty-one is five fifty. It's about, it ranges from twenty-five to hun- uh, to one fifty. Uh, sewer likewise ranges from, um, twenty-five all the way up to one sixty. Sewer's a little higher because it's, uh, costs more to treat sewer than does water. Ma'am? If you, if you like, these are based on grants, these are still significantly lower than, um, what our consultant a year ago recommended our volumetric charges to be. They're n- they're not even close to what he recommended them to be. So, that's, that's, um, how we budget, how we balance the budget up to this point.
The other, I think the other piece too, that we need to make, everybody, make sure everybody's aware of those two loans with Texas Water Development Board, it requires this increase.
So, thank you.
If you choose not to.
So, we're gonna pay that out of utility funds, not debt?
We're gonna pay, we're gonna pay, we have to show them that we can pay it out of utility. It can be, we, it won't be able to go on the debt schedule until next year. So, next year, we can, we can adjust this, but this year, we have to be able to show that we have to be able to pay.
You have to be able to cover the debt.
We have to pay, it's a hundred and eighty-seven, eight ninety.
It's, it's on, yeah, I saw it on there, I just wondered if we had to pay it from utility, or could it be debt?
That it's on there. Yeah. It has to be paid out, I have to prove.
Until it becomes long-term.
Term debt, which won't be another year.
So, we have to show that we can cover it.
And it, and it actually, it actually may be two years before it comes long-term debt, Mary, because there's a chance that we won't even, that, that we won't close on it until after the end of this coming fiscal year, but I have to show them in the budget that we can cover it now.
I just, my question is, this, what you sent us on Friday, I, I'm not following those numbers. On the, on the increases, it was, it was the five dollars for water and sewer, and then we were gonna go up to three seventy-five for zero to one thousand gallons, is that right?
No, we're going up to four dollars for zero to one thousand gallons, and we weren't charging anything for, for.
So, what we got on Friday is no good?
No, we've changed it, we had to change it today, because with what you had on Friday, we were still fifty-six thousand, wasn't that right?
Cause this generates four hundred and seventeen and.
And this.
It was eighty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine, still below.
Right.
How much?
With just, without doing the twenty-five cent increment, it was eighty-three thousand eight, nine hundred and eighty-nine.
Without doing the volumetric charges, we were below. Still.
Well, the last budget we got on Friday showed a deficit of four forty-four, six twenty-six. And then this spreadsheet was gonna generate four seventeen, seven thirty, so that's only, I'm gonna say thirty thousand dollars.
Then you, then we made the changes.
Cut the HSA.
But we had to put the HSA money back in that was taken out.
We had to put the.
The whole seventeen hundred was taken out, so we were putting in a thousand, okay, okay.
In, in each department though.
We put in twenty-five thousand more for the HSA, or twenty-seven thousand total with the HSA and the u- and reducing the utility investment.
We brought the sales tax collection up twenty-five thousand dollars, just a tweak.
I saw that, yeah.
Where, where do I, I think seven forty or so roughly.
So, seven forty, it's, it's reflecting six seventy-six, but that was for, that was before July's collection, and they were around seventy thousand.
So, so when we looked at this, the, the rates, residential, commercial, we're still charging the same amount for residential as we do commercial?
Commercial rates with larger meters are proportionally higher than residential rates.
Where am I missing that?
The small meters aren't.
Right.
The small meters are, mom and pop meters, the one, the below one inch is, is, um, still the same as residential. E- where, where it increases are the larger meter sizes. And the commercial, if you just adjust the commercial, even if you just, even if you adjust the smaller meter sizes for the commercial, you're not gonna make up that deficit, because.
No, I, I, I wouldn't anticipate that, but commercial meters are one and one and a half.
One and a half goes up to, um, one fourteen and one seventeen for sewer.
Yeah, see, I just, I was looking at the, the T W L information that we had, and, and the residential was still, I mean, you gotta have a big house to have inch and a half meter residential, but it still has to do with volume flow, and I see what you're doing now. They just, there is no difference between residential and commercial rates.
At the five eights or three quarters, there's not, there's a slight difference at the one inch. Well, no, not at the one inch either, it's the same.
It's all the way down, it's the same.
Yeah. But you're not gonna have, I think all of our residential is five eights or three, is that right, Chad, five eights or three quarters? Yeah. I have a copy of the proposed volumetric charges, if anybody wants to look at them, that Grant proposed, they're here.
John Tudor, thanks for what you did the other day. Uh, cleaning up all the leaves around the plaza, I, I saw you out there sweating away, but thanks for doing that. Appreciate it, city, whether it's two days later or not getting their loan all back into the state again, though, but that's another conversation. Appreciate you.
So, it's, so, uh, commercial water bill at minimum is gonna be going up about fourteen bucks.
With our base rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, added about that.
What do we get is?
Would y'all like to page through each of these maybe, and just check them off and say, hey, if you've got any questions by page? Would y'all like to just start with page one, and say, hey, no questions, looks good, just to make sure we can, maybe everybody's looking at the same thing at the same time?
That would help.
Would that help?
Yeah.
So, maybe just on the. You want to, it may go, it may go pretty quickly too, but at least we can say, hey, is, any line I'm gonna talk about?
Talking on utility or general?
You wanna start with the general, Mary?
Oh, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, uh, revenues on general, anybody have any questions on that?
Doesn't have to take long, but just in case, we can check these off and get to the end, if they were good with where we're at, and then. They're gonna be good with the revenue side on the general fund? All right.
Okay, general fund admin.
Y'all good with the admin side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
General fund maintenance.
Any questions on this one? Good with maintenance?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Fire. Please remember, there's fifty percent, there's four, four hundred and fifty thousand coming in from the county.
And Craig did, um, work with Blake, y'all, y'all pissed off, other than maybe two, y'all pushed those hires off to January, is that right? So, that.
Yeah.
That's be the, we phased those out a quarter.
And insurance is adjusted accordingly and all that, based on that.
Y'all good with fire?
P D.
We corrected the overtime number right today, I was, had a typo in there. Good with P D?
Okay, court.
Good on court?
Okay. Sanitation.
Not much to talk about on that one.
No, not much there.
Trash keeps coming.
Main Street.
Y'all good on Main Street?
Okay. Animal control. And remember, uh, we pay a third of this.
All good?
Parks and recreation. One thing I point out here is that it's very doubtful that capital outlay will be paid out this year, but it's in there just in case it is, and the reason I say that is just talking to Hunter Rush with M H S, just the timing on the grant, I think that we'll get the engineering done this year, but I don't think, um, that, um, we'll see any actual construction until twenty twenty-seven, sometime after October of next year.
All right.
Uh, code is a big one, I've tried to cut it as much as we can, but, but we're still stuck with eight hundred. Any questions on that? Our code enforcement officers, you're sitting right next to one of them. Yeah.
Did we ever sign out anything on the uniforms, we were gonna check on that contract.
Angie, what's Stan say?
We're still waiting on Stan to get back with us.
So, um, total expenditures, um, three, three point eight and change, we're, um, under or over, uh, by one hundred and eleven eight, which gives us a little cushion for, um, anything that comes up, plus possibly looking at some salary adjustments, um, after, after the budget year begins, and after we see what the revenue trend's gonna be. Okay, utility fund? Revenues?
Are we all comfortable with Craig's calculation? Uh, I, um, I think it's conservative enough.
Any comments on the revenues on utility? Guess.
All good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, public works. Everybody okay?
Got anything more?
Okay.
Mary, y'all good on public, on public works too?
Yes.
Okay.
Utilities.
Good with utilities? Okay.
Can I ask what a utility grant revenue is?
Utility.
Two hundred and four thousand, would you say that?
Two hundred and four thousand? But what is it?
Texas Water Development Board.
So, they're gonna give us money or we have to pay them money?
We, we, they're, we have some, we have some partial loan slash grants, okay? And actually, that part is actually coming out of a loan, a very low interest loan. But that's a good question, John.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pub- public finance stuff, some things are, where they were, it's, it's hard to make sense of it.
The one time it charged on my phone, it was eight people rotary dial services. And I called the Texas State Comptel and asked him about where all those millions of dollars for rotary dial service went to, and he couldn't tell me. So, I've got to ask questions sometimes.
Okay, uh, storm water in the utility fund, and that's just, um, that's for storm water maintenance. We just, you, remember, it was like forty thousand, and we reduced it to twenty-one hundred, just to have some money in there. And then, um, utility fund water. The, uh, raw, raw water line loan is in there, um, fifty-one sixty.
I'd be glad we don't have any more engineer expenses on these things.
I never.
You will never be at that position in a city.
Yeah, we just be spending a lot.
Yep.
And it is a lot.
That's, um, that engineer expense as well as the one that'll come out of the sewer, comes out of the Texas Water Development Board loan.
Y'all good with water expenditures?
And then we have the sewer fund.
Y'all good with the sewer fund?
And that brings us to, uh, revenue over sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars.
See, that's too much, you weren't paying for it, though.
Hmm, hmm. Yeah. Y'all wanna discuss the water and sewer rates any, any further? Are y'all, are y'all comfortable with? I mean, nobody likes it, nobody likes it.
I'm not comfortable with them, but.
I, I mean, nobody's looking forward to having a, a water rate increase, but it's not a way to run the, not a way to run the city without it.
I think at some point too, we have to address the issue of, um, employee benefits and that too, because they're outpacing, we can't just keep raising rates and, and not look at other things, because we're asking the citizens of the city to pay for benefits that I'm gonna say probably the majority of the people in this city don't get. So, we have to look at an offset there. I think we're kinda behind the eight ball this year, but, and I'm not, I'm not saying I want, I don't wanna eliminate benefits, but I, I think we spend more in benefits than most small businesses.
With the TML, our water rates are falling within where most of them are. The issue is that most of them don't have that fifteen dollars we keep bringing up. And we've got years left to pay for that that shouldn't have been put on there to begin with. But it's just what it is. But I thi- I think if we also look at that, that, those results that we've had, keeping the, uh, commercial rates at the same level that the residential rates were at. I mean, I don't know, we're, we're, we're coming up with an extra hundred and two thousand dollars on, on residents. And I think we're hitting, looking at these rates, the ones with four, six, and eight inch lines, you're gonna be like, holy crap. But I mean.
You would definitely think that the commercial would be more than the residential.
But things, remember on the, the eight inch line, like I said, Logan's Point, they're passing that on to their citizens. So they have rent increases to cover the, what was the water bill from the city is being charged as a pass through their rent. So like, if you don't take that eight inch meter up, it's a profit center for whoever owns Logan's Point, 'cause they're charging it to their residents right now. It looks bad, but it's, it's actually, it's a wash from what we were charging directly from the city.
It doesn't come out much. It's only like seventy-one dollars versus sixty-five for a.
What was that again, Mary?
I said it, it, when you, when you take the eight inch.
Yeah.
By the hundred and four apartments, it comes out to like seventy-one dollars versus the sixty-five for a residential. So you're only talking probably five more dollars.
Yeah.
A month.
Well, I was looking at the, the, I, we know what that one is, the three and the four and the six that we have, but even, I mean, I don't, I don't know, like I said, I, I just have to, to, to base it off what I'm, what I see. And I just, like I told you, shared with you what our water bill was and it was like, you know. So, it's gotta come from somewhere, but.
Well, and I, you know, I'd also advise the council that nothing's getting cheaper. And infrastructure, Chad and I were just talking earlier, what were the increases in the meter costs?
Well, the, the meters have went up substantially since the last, I think it was a little, basically, just, just the cost.
But we had all blocked in though, right?
Well, we're talking about new meters.
Right.
We're talking about larger meters.
Because this, it's jumped like two thousand, six centimeters since y'all over here. Just the cost, that's nothing to do with.
And that's us replacing meters, but we shouldn't have to replace new meters.
No, I'm not talking, but.
Okay, new construction, don't they pay for that in the process?
They do. But the point is, is that everything has increased exponentially. The water lot, everything from PVC pipe, everything that, that is infrastructure.
I mean, the cheapest thing to build anything's today, but you have to have the money to build it.
I'm not questioning it, but I'm just trying to understand it. Why would the commercial be the same as a residential? Why would they hold them, you know, higher than?
Some commercial would be like, just pick any of the little buildings on the square that's just a potty flushing. You know, and it's, if you put a big commercial rate on them, you'll close people down. It's like, there's, it's not a burden on the system, in other words, but then you go to the larger meters where somebody actually is water intensive user as a commercial site. And then, and also you might have the affluent side that we're dealing with, like a truck stop or something, you know, they got bigger meters going to it, that's, it's kinda two different types of commercial. That's the, that's kinda the logic on the small meter anyway, just the small meters.
And I think what she's getting at is the rates are identical all the way down. So even if you're a resident and you have a three inch meter, you're gonna pay four fifty-seven, which is four fifty-seven. It's all based off of, of, I understand flow, but, that would be my only question on it, 'cause what we looked at with TML, these were different rates.
That's, that's what, that's what I was looking at, where it's like, how, how do we wrench that?
Volumetric charges. In TML, different cities do it different ways. Certain cities just have, this is how much we're charging for a commercial, this is how much we're charging for, for residential. What we have been recommended to do is to base it on the amount of water that potentially could flow through that meter. So, on a small mom and pop, I mean, we can raise that. But on a small mom and pop business, and that, there's a hundred and fifty-two of them, okay? Their rates, that, their rates are the same as a residential rate. 'Cause it is a three quarters, five eighths inch meter, it's coming through there, that, and they're not gonna use that much water. If you look at the, if you look at the amount of revenue that's generated off of that, it isn't significant. And I mean, we can raise it, but it's, you know, I, I'm just thinking, small businesses are, you know, they're not heavy water users. It would be like anything over there. Or the feed store or anyplace else.
No, I, I, I'm just saying like, with somebody that has a larger dimension on that, why would they still be maintaining the same price as a, a residential?
But.
It would be larger of a company that would require more water than what a residential would.
But all your residential's are wa- are three quarters or five eighths. We don't have anything larger than that in residential's. We only have a one inch. Now, if we have a, somebody that wants to put a three inch in the house, they're gonna use more water. They're gonna use a lot more water, it, and therefore they should pay for that.
Yeah.
But right now, and I, it, right now, and I'm gonna guess that most cities don't have anything more than residential's for.
No, usually not bigger than a inch.
Yeah.
And it's more likely if you got a pool, you know, like a, a big lot of water.
And, and that's.
Get a big pool.
And, uh, the house will probably say, well, big, I think it's, it's.
I don't know who, who lives there.
Multiple sprinkler systems and pool.
Good customer.
Excellent.
What a customer.
Excellent customer.
I have no leaks, I have no running toilets in my house. They say you use eleven thousand gallons of water a month, and it's just me and cat.
Have you had a conversation with the cat?
What's your cat do when you're not there?
I throw it up a swimming pool, when I'm gone. You know, I don't know what's going on, but I don't use eleven thousand gallons of water. I don't know my, I don't water my lawn, I don't have a lawn with water. You know, but I don't use eleven thousand gallons of water a month, they tell me that. I think there's some spray that needs.
So tonight, y'all know we're, we're proposing the budget, and then next week we'll, we'd, we'd post it tomorrow, yeah, for approval next week.
We never looked at this, we're just curious. I know everybody likes to have a pretty yard, but there is no sewer on irrigation connection.
That's right.
But, why would we pay any less for irrigation water than we do residential water? Is it different water?
I'd be happy to increase irrigation.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I, I, I'm just asking the question.
Because, the only reason it's sixteen dollars, uh, was that that was what the consultant recommended. It's at half of the.
And is that to replace the meter?
Yeah, basically. But we, we can, we sure can add another sixteen to that.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm not talking about adding more money. I'm just asking the question is that if, if we, it's not enough money to mess with, I'm just, we've had a lot of work to do, we've got a lot of work to do, and nobody likes to go up, kind of where we're at, so.
I don't think we have any irrigation connections that don't have, that don't have a, a residential connection with it, right? I mean, it's, that's somebody that's got, went ahead and paid for a second meter that.
You didn't let them pay for a second meter, just help you with residential, we have to get charged water and sewage that you need.
Yeah.
On your dish, you hear. What are you irrigating? You irrigate your water or your swimming pool?
Okay, thirteen hundred dollars for that.
You just don't get charged with sewage, you're not running the back end.
Y'all wanna consider any changes to the larger commercial sizes?
I mean, if I was making any kind of proposal, it's just not enough money to mess with. I mean, I'd add twenty-five percent more to the irrigation connection, just because that's, if, if we're hurting for revenue, if I'm watering my yard, that means I, I got more money than I got cents versus some of these residential's that I just, I don't, I don't like going fourteen bucks on them. But whatever we did, I'd suggest come down off that one, but it's just not enough revenue to mess with.
They are, they are paying.
Twenty thousand dollars compared to, you know, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. It's just, it's less than a percent, so it really doesn't matter.
They are paying double the rate on the water cost itself. Instead of four and a quarter, it's nine dollars. Per thousand, a significantly higher rate per thousand.
Yeah, I see that now.
Rebecca, it's like, yep.
Here's where we're at.
Well, I'll just ask the council, maybe we'll, we'd need a, a motion to propose the budget for next week so we can post in the paper, unless there's any additional changes or.
I'll go ahead and propose for it.
The motion for Rebecca to propose the budget is with the water increase, and sewer increase, and that's where the segment from order to. To propose the budget. So I'll in favor of proposing the budget as presented with the water, uh, and sewer rate increases.
Right. I think we oughta look at the commercial dumpsters again too.
Motion carries.
Later, later.
Yes.
Easy proposal on that.
I make a proposal.
And I'll, I'll take credit, so Craig, you know that, I'll take credit for having done that back then. The roll-off rates were real high compared to what independents could come to town and bring a roll-off to somebody, I'm like, you know, why not let it become, let them compete? I still think we need to be careful and make sure that they're competitive, and if we're using sanitation solutions for a roll-off dumpster, it doesn't need to be three times the rate that a local business person that might bring roll-offs to your site could do it for, it needs to be competitive. But the fee we're not getting.
Well, we're gonna take, we're gonna take multiple bids as well and do it right, and we weren't doing all those things back then.
We can't do that while we're under a contract.
Well, you can actually.
Huh?
You can't do that. That's why, that's why I encouraged us to make the change back then, just 'cause we were under a contract and couldn't.
Well, when, when the contract expired, we can, can we?
We can, in two and a half years.
Okay.
But if we increase the, if we increase the roll-off, if y'all agree to increase franchise fee or put a franchise fee on the roll-off rates.
That's the key, the franchise fee.
The contractor, sanitation's is gonna want an extension on the contract, does someone.
Key is we're not getting the franchise fee when it goes to someone.
Then they won't get any money for two and a half years.
I actually came in here tonight to tell you guys that I appreciate sanitation solutions and what they can do in my neighborhood, some cleaners with those trash all behind, and they get everything you speak out there, and I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, they do. I, I second that, they, they do do a good job.
Thank you for that feedback.
Do you want a new contract to get more revenue?
You're gonna want an extension of the contract.
To do that, to get more revenue.
Why would they want an extension to build it, because we're not getting it today?
To be able to build more, they're not getting anything today.
I'm gonna change the contract.
When they change the contract, that's typical of companies, they'll just want it, I'm, that's, yeah.
Well, they're not.
They're gonna, and it doesn't mean that you have to go with it, I'm just saying they're gonna want it.
Yeah.
So, and it, you'd be, franchise fee may be contingent on that, so.
Well, we are done for tonight. I know we are meeting down from week after week after week after week, but I appreciate everybody's hard work on it too.
Well, I do too.
Yep. Set that good.
Next year will have to be an easier year.
Yeah, hopefully. So we would need a motion to approve, uh, to, uh, adjourn, sorry. Motion for Mark, second Marty, all in favor? Go enjoy your families.
And a shout out to Tech Stop for fixing our stop signs so rapidly.
Yeah, that was a tire buster if they didn't come.
They had somebody, they had somebody for a.